There we go.
There you go.
We're online.
Just get the live stream going. All right, there we go. All right, this is the January 25th, 2022 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is the Chair. Staff tonight is Diane Glenbosky and Deb Jones. Members of the public wanting to address the commission need to do it under public communications, raise your hand to be recognized. And if you're an applicant, we will see you and promote you so that you can present your application.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. Looks like all our regular members are here. We have a quorum. Alternates, we have Kevin Pitfall. I don't see Steve. Okay. See, we have no hearings. No minutes to approve. Public Communications, does anyone on the commission have any communications to bring forth? The staff have anything? Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
I do not see any raised hands. Oh wait, hold on, wait a minute, I do have one. Sorry, Tom Bradham.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, hello.
Hi. Could you state your name and address?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Tom Bradham and I reside at Seven Gravel Street in Mystic. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the commission this evening. I have posed my comments in the form of a few questions for the commission. I am unsure how much time is allowed me, so please just tell me to stop when you have heard enough. I know that this is not a discussion and that you won't be able to answer these questions immediately. But I hope a commissioner or two may respond at some point under another agenda item later this evening. Okay, here we go. Question number one. Late last year, specifically at its November 9th, 2021 meeting, the commission concluded that a letter should be sent to the town council asking that the two bodies collaborate on the proposed short-term rental ordinance put forth by the town council. Has this letter been sent to the council? Has there been a response? Are these communications available to the public? Question number two. At the same November 9th meeting, the minutes reflect that the commission believes that short-term rentals are a planning and zoning issue and should be regulated by them. When can we expect the commission to add the STR issue to its meeting agenda? Question three. Are any of the commissioners aware of the recent actions of our neighbors in Leggett and their efforts regarding the short-term rental issues in that town? After two years of attempting to regulate STRs with an ordinance, the town council decided it was more appropriate to impose STR controls through zoning regulations. At its January 13th, 2022 meeting, the zoning commission unanimously approved an amendment to the zoning regulations governing STRs. This makes two zoning commissions in southeastern Connecticut, Knott and Leggett, that are regulating STRs through the land use zoning process. Question four, and my last one. Is the commission aware that the state of Connecticut and Public Act 117, Sections 329 through 330, effective October 1st, 2019, actually defines a short-term rental in Connecticut and subjects it to the same 15% room occupancy tax as any other transient lodging such as a traditional hotel or motel room? This definition is fully explained by the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services in a special notice, SN 2019, parenthetical nine, rule occupancy tax on short-term rentals. In closing, I would like to thank the commissioners for their efforts in this area. I also believe that the STR issue is a land use issue and should be regulated as such. The quote grandfather provision unquote, often cited by advocates favoring STR ordinances, can be overcome with carefully drafted zoning regulations. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Braden to repeat that? The revenue sharing information, if he's still available or not? Did someone write it down?
It's a tax.
I realize, I just want to be able to read it.
Yes, it's the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. And it has different publications for public policy analysis. This is special notice 2019, number nine, basically, parenthetical nine.
Thank you. I just, I want to read these things. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, it's very informative.
Diane, Tom, in response to your question about the letter, it was written. We had not heard anything back from the council as of now. Usually takes them a while to get their feet on the ground after they're installed.
Yes, and you know, I follow your agendas and I see that. I didn't bother speaking at the last PCC meeting because it was a full agenda, so I thought I would just chime in tonight. Because the STR issues, you know, are being raised still with the town council. And I think it's a land use issue, and if you haven't reviewed the Leggett zoning commission meeting and their actions taken by the Leggett planner, whose name I think is Juliette Hodge. And Eric Treister is the chairman of the zoning board of appeals in Leggett. And they have amended their zoning regulations to essentially allow hosted short-term rentals and not allow non-hosted short-term rentals. Because that in Leggett is the problem, much as it is in Groton. The non-hosted short-term rentals, and essentially, you know, I live on gravel street. April Street has started calling itself the Mystic Drawbridge End. Great in Sleep 16. The Great Gull Island has expanded from six lodging houses in Mystic to nine. So I think the the incidences of investment firms coming into Mystic, buying properties and basically just turning them into hotels and motels boutique lodging facilities is, has, you know, since I've been following this issue for the last two years, since October of 2019. And it's really become more and more exacerbated. And with knowing basically banning short-term rentals, it's going to push a lot of people more into Groton and other, I should say, other parts of Groton. And particularly Mystic. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
See, anyone else?
No transportation presentation.
Oh, no, 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 that will be under the agenda item.
Oh, he's, okay. Next item is site plans. SIT 2122 Gerard parking expansion. Is the applicant present?
You want to promote them, Diane? I can if you need me to. She's got it. And you're muted, Diane.
Dave, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, can you share your screen if you need to?
Or do you have to do something to allow me to do that?
Um. Promote the panel. Okay, you should be able to share your screen now. I promoted you to a panelist.
Okay. Okay, can everybody see my screen with the plans?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'll start off. My name is David Held. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor with Provost in Rivero. And the site we're discussing tonight is the Gerard Nissan dealership at the corner of Gold Star Highway and Antonino Road. And this is a follow-up application to the one you recently approved for the construction of their service write-up addition on the dealership building. So we're looking to add some additional paved parking on the site. And I'm going to go to the second sheet here, which is the overall property survey. And as you may recall from our previous application, there was an area back here at the southerly half of the site, which had been surfaced with some pavement millings in some areas and some gravel and other areas. And it was being used for the storage of vehicle inventory, some employee parking, things of that nature. However, that area had never been permitted through this commission or through town staff for that use. So as part of that prior application, the applicant had agreed to basically restore that area with appropriate landscaping. And basically to renaturalize it and re-vegetate it and cease the use of parking vehicles there and storing, storing inventory there. So as the follow-up to that approval, we're coming back for the formal approval to use a portion of that area for parking. And I'm going to go here to sheet three, which is our detailed site plan. So you can see here, we're proposing an area of paved parking striped for employees and/or customers. And we're reconfiguring the striped parking layout we had shown on the previous application for the building addition, which is mostly shown here on the second site plan. So previously, this area up near Gold Star Highway was striped and allocated for customers and/or employees. And because we're adding this additional parking space in the back for for customers and employees, we're able to allocate this area up near the road for vehicle inventory and display spaces, which obviously from a business standpoint, makes a lot more sense to have the new cars displayed up near the highway where they're a little bit more visible. Rather than limiting the number of display spaces and having him hidden more towards the back of the property. So I'm going to go back up here to the first site plan. You can see here at the easterly edge of our proposed parking area, we've got a, basically a three-step stormwater treatment system. We've graded this entire paved parking area to go to a catch basin inlet and hydrodynamic separator here at the northeastern corner. So this will capture all of the new impervious surface that we're proposing. And from that hydrodynamic separator, we're then discharging into this surface stormwater treatment basin here, which is a bioretention basin with basically a sand and organic material filter and an underdrain system, which then discharges here to a larger stormwater detention basin at the southerly end of the system. And the purpose of this is to eliminate any increases in peak flows where the public road drainage system ultimately discharges down here a little ways upstream of some wetlands and receiving waters. So we're maintaining peak flow rates here at this discharge point to match existing conditions. And those existing conditions assume that this area up here, which had been surfaced with the pavement millings, we're assuming that that was more of a natural condition as an existing scenario. So we're probably getting a little bit of extra even detention because we're not counting the existing sort of paved surface up there now. We're assuming that was a pervious surface to begin with, and that's what we're designing too. So you can see down here in our table of zoning requirements, we meet all of the requirements, both of the CR zone and the WRPD. The WRPD zoning regulations allow an increase of impervious surface on an existing developed site like this up to 20% before we would be required to upgrade the entire site's stormwater treatment system. Anything 20% or below. And we, we only have to comply with the WRPD treatment requirements for just the new impervious surface. And you can see here down at the bottom of the table, we've specifically pointed out that we're increasing the impervious surface 19.6% above what is currently allowed through the existing zoning and site plan approvals on this site. And on the following sheet, we've provided an impervious area detail here. Just so you can get a sense graphically of what the existing approved impervious surface area is on the site, which is this sort of dotted hatched area here comprising the existing parking and building roof. And then over here in the solid shading is what we're proposing for the increased impervious surface with this application. We've also provided on sheet five, a detailed landscaping plan, which is in compliance with your regulations, both for interior parking landscaping and perimeter landscaping, as well as street trees along Antonino Road. And the area up here to the southwest corner of the site would remain in its natural state. And again, if you reviewed that zoning table, we're providing in excess of the required natural area on the site even after the work is done. Let's see, the only other thing with regard to landscaping is if we go back up here, there is this area at the very southerly end of where we're proposing the new parking, where it's currently gravelled and had been previously used for the storage of of certain items related to the dealership use. And consistent with our prior approval, we are still proposing to take this additional gravel area and establish a permanent vegetative cover there and abandon any use of that area for parking of vehicles or storage of equipment or anything of that nature. And you basically allow it to go back to more of a natural state rather than the gravel surface that's there now. So again, we do have the detailed landscaping plan, and other than that, the last two sheets of our plan give the erosion and sedimentation control notes and narrative and just some engineering details here. You can see we've provided a detail for the hydrodynamic separator. And a lot of minute details here for the stormwater treatment and stormwater detention systems. I have had a chance to look through the draft motions that Diane prepared for this evening, and there's nothing in there that we take exception to. We've discussed them previously with her and we're fine with that. It's pretty, pretty minor housekeeping sort of issues. As part of that, we would be having a spill kit onsite at all times during construction because we are in the WRPD district. But again, we take no exception to any of those proposed approval conditions. So if there's any other questions or comments, that concludes my presentation of the project.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to staff and after that we open it up to the commission, or if they have questions. So.
Dave, do you want to put it back to the actual site plan, if you can?
Sure.
There, that's fine. Dave gave a good presentation. I don't have a lot of comments. Basically, we reviewed the project to make sure it included that it met the WRPD requirements for stormwater on the site for keeping percent natural area and maximum impervious surface. Dave was right that for developed sites, if you if you pave or increase the impervious surface by less than 20%, the existing impervious surface area doesn't have to comply or bring, bring it up to the current standards for the WRPD. But the new impervious has to meet all the standards of the WRPD. So in this case, with the previous site plan, they do have some stormwater treatment on the site of an oil-water separator, and then it leads into a detention basin on the site. And I think we went over that with the last site plan. But the new area where they're paving, they actually do comply with all the new WRPD requirements or the, basically a treatment train where you would where you would filter it out in a number of stages. So there, there is a condition that we placed on them or were requiring them to place on the plans that for for the landscaping requirements, right now they meet the zoning regulation landscaping requirements because they have that preserved natural area on the west side of the new parking area. We have a note, we're going to put a note on the plan that if that natural landscaped area or natural tree area ever gets removed, they will have to plant perimeter shade trees along that parking area. So that will be a note on the plan. And we also have a note on the plan that basically we want that southern area gated off until they get a certificate of site plan compliance for that area. They are working on the addition right now. I'm not sure at this point whether they're going to get a CO for the addition based on the existing site plan or whether they're going to wait to do the whole site and then get the CO, but this leaves them a little options available for actually gating off that southern area and just not using it until they get the certificate of site plan compliance for that southern area. Other than that, we don't have any issues with the rest of the site.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to the commissioners and if they have any questions, comments, I'll start with you, Mike.
I don't really have very many questions. I mostly just general. And I know that we just did this application not too long ago, so it was a little bit. What would be the trigger that would make upgrades to the existing site have to come into place?
If they would have put, made more than 20% increase in impervious surface over the entire site. So if they had expanded that southern parking lot a little more, they probably would have upgraded the entire site.
Yeah, and is that considered over the life of the property or just each application?
In this case, we went back to the, the the new app, we went back to the entire site. So we looked at the entire site. Um.
No, I just, I want to make sure that I'm right, because I had a conversation with Deb about this the last time, and I don't have any problems with it, but I just, I don't, you know, I know that like a lot of times you'll see applications and they'll come in and you try to stay in under the, whatever it is. And then, and then it's like every year you're seeing an application that just stays in underneath that certain percentage, and the thing keeps getting bigger and bigger while the upgrades are never done, and I just want to
Yeah.
get a feel for what's, what's going on. I'm fine with it. No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
No.
I'm generally fine with the entire plan. One little question for the retention areas of the upper end, the lower one. I guess the upper one is more almost like a large slew, but planting materials in those, those tend to get, can get pretty ratty and muddy if no thought is given into it, and I didn't really see any notes on that.
Yeah, so if we go here, I'm going to just zoom up on this little bit here, we've got a cross-section for what that bioretention area would look like. And it's not really going to be a a muddy or long-term water holding sort of thing unless there's a problem with it, which would have to be rectified.
Right.
You can see what the materials are specified here. This 18-inch thick soil layer. You can see here what that soil layer is actually supposed to be. There's two different options. But for both options, the the primary component of that soil layer is a well-drained sand. And then there's some portion of organic matter in there, which helps with the, the adsorption of pollutants and the uptake of the pollutants and promotes the vegetative growth within the mulch layer above. So it's a relatively free draining material. And we haven't provided necessarily a detailed planting list here, but it would be, if you read the notes down here, it would be herbaceous facultative wetland species. So these would be things that they would have a maximum height of five feet at maturity, so you're not planting large shrubs or trees in there that would have a root system that would interfere with the drainage characteristics. And they would basically be species that can tolerate a fair amount of inundation, but then can still survive and thrive when that water drains out of the soil because it is a relatively well-drained system. So it gives you stormwater treatment through a number of different mechanisms. You have the adsorption with both the sand particles and the organics within that soil mixture. And you've also got the vegetative uptake from those species which would be planted there and given the hydrologic regime in there over a period of maybe two growing seasons. Regardless of what you planted there, you would find that those facultative wetland species would naturally colonize in that area just because that's what's going to grow there. And there's, there's certainly enough wetlands in the immediate proximity of this property and probably anywhere in the state of Connecticut that seeds are going to find their way in there through natural means. And you would find those wetland species like sedges and things of that nature would start growing there on their own anyway. But those are the kind of things that would be growing there.
But you, you actually don't have a spec of what you're going to put, you're kind of hoping it fills in on its own. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with, with rain gardens and this kind of depression, and usually you started off with something that'll be something pleasant. And over the years, it, it develops into something much more natural. But it could take a deck, a couple decades before it really fills in with what you really like it to be, or something that looks natural.
Yeah, it would be, it would be some sort of a wetland seed mix that would be appropriate for that hydrologic condition.
So something like a wetland seed mix is what we would expect to see put in there, not just how contractors say it'll fill in, like I said here.
Yeah.
It's a little nonspecific there.
Do you want to make that a technical item now?
Yes, please.
Right.
Something should happen in there.
Yep.
Because I've seen it also go both ways, some places where it's not specified. Every time the, your contractor subcontract comes in to, to mow the lawn, they end up mowing the whole basin out because it looks better and the people before it, after you're gone, after the engineer is gone, they don't realize that it's supposed to have four feet tall planting on it. Right, so they keep it mowed very nicely and it falls apart. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yep.
Barbara?
The only comment I have to make is that I did drive by up there to check it out. Only to try and get straight in my brain the Cardinal Honda, the Nissan, the Gerard Nissan and that whole area and which is which, because I get confused over which parking lot is which. And but after listening to all the details, I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Okay, so.
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kevin?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
I just had one, one question on the parking lot, the new parking lot in northwest, I mean northeast corner, it looks like there's a barrier that goes across the road to divert water flow. water flow. Yeah. How much, how how high is that barrier or how much flow is or the?
So that's a three inch high. Hmm, three inch high. It's basically like a a small speed bump.
Right. But what sort of a storm will that that would you would expect that to control?
Uh, I would expect that to handle at least a twenty five year storm, if not, if not more, being three inches high.
Mm hmm. Well, most of the design works done on twenty five year storm.
Typically, a storm source system would be designed for a ten year storm, and then your detention systems would be designed for either twenty five or a hundred, depending on the sensitivity of the downstream area.
Yeah, but this is good enough for a twenty five year storm.
Yeah, I I believe our our detention system is designed for a hundred year storm.
Mm hmm. Now, I was just curious how much it, how effective it would be. I didn't have any any other concerns or questions on that. If not, does anyone have anything else uh they wanna address? Does anyone have a problem with the proposed motion? Everybody's quiet tonight.
All fine.
Well, no, no one does, and I'll I'll make a motion to approve site plan S I T twenty one dash twenty two for Gerard Nissan parking expansion for twenty five Gold Star Highway with the following modifications. One, no cell shall be placed on the final site plan, A. Any future removal of the existing tree canopy along the western edge of the new parking area shall require compliance with section eight point one dash five of the zoning regulations. B, there shall be no parking, storage or display of any vehicles within the area of revegetation on the south portion of the site. C, the schedule for ongoing maintenance of all stormwater facilities shall include the inspection and maintenance of the storm scepter. D, spill prevention, including spill kits, shall be provided onsite during construction. Two, a note shall be placed on the plan that states, quote, all requirements of site plan X twenty one number oh one are still in effect unless superseded by this site plan S I T twenty one dash twenty two, end of quote. Three, a note shall be placed on the plan that states, quote, a gate required with X twenty one dash oh one parent or some other approved barrier and apparent shall be installed and remain closed in the area to the south of the gate shall not be used until a certificate of site plan compliance is issued for S I T twenty one dash twenty two. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan with a less than twenty percent increase in impervious surface over the entire site, the reestablishment of the vegetated area on the site and the upgrading of the storm water system for the new impervious parking area meets the intent of section six point four for the Water Resource Protection District. Is there a second?
I would second that.
It's moved in second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, do we wanna add Hal's recommendation for the grass as a item or just leave it as a technical item?
Diane, should she take it as a technical item?
I can do it as a I have a few public public works, technical items that were minor, so I'll add that as a technical item too.
Okay, as long as it's not missed, that's all. Thank you.
Mm hmm. Does anyone have anything else? If not, then we'll vote on the on the motion. All those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. All right. All right, good luck with your parking lot. Okay, no old business, no business. We have a transit oriented design and M T C zone preliminary discussion.
Yes, um, you received a letter from Zell Stever at your last meeting and asked that this item be placed on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Stever is here to run through his suggestions um in his letter as well as doing a a quick PowerPoint. So I am going to promote him panelists so he can share his screen and and address you guys. All right, so you can unmute. There you go.
Okay, can you can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm Zell Stever, elevated eighty one Main Street in uh Groton and uh come before you. Um, and I apologize that I was unable to uh get to you uh during your last meeting as I got tied up the town council and uh by the time I got free, you were well past uh the point where I could participate. So I appreciate your uh giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. I would like to share um a little bit about um what the um has um progressed over um the the last several years. Um, Deb, I don't see, I've got a share.
Uh, let's see, let me just make sure you're a panelist. Okay, you should be coming back in as a panelist. And you should be able to
There I have it. It's it's there now. Um, so I will um there, I'm also on the screen for a moment. So um let me start out by um uh tell you what I've been up to over the the last uh a few years. Uh, as you um are probably aware, um I've been on the uh task force for resiliency and sustainability uh in Groton um and chair that um um that uh that task task force. Um, so um what happened um is that um us we got up there. Okay, we got that. Now let's see if we can get that to full screen. Is that full screen with you? Deb?
No, no, it's not. Um. Do you, you just need to start the the PowerPoint.
Okay. There, I think we've got it.
There you go.
Okay, good. Well, um, so this um whole effort started um back when you were uh uh when the zoning commission was reconsidering uh what to do about upgrading uh the zoning regulations for the town of Groton. And um I participated early on in that with the uh Water Resource Protection District. And then followed on um and got very interested in what was uh being proposed with um the whole area of uh redevelopment of the 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 downtown Route one area. And the the commission was excited and interested in uh basically creating this new district for that whole area uh referred to as the um uh uh the mixed use um town center, the M T C. And um after uh looking at that for some several months, uh it became clear to me that um there was an opportunity there that was not being considered. And the opportunity was that uh just to the southwest of that particular uh district uh Amtrak and another set of rails uh exist there and um uh it was within clearly a half mile distance or half a mile from the tracks. And so I started pursuing the idea that um after looking at the literature that um this might become a transit oriented district. And I'd made that suggestion back uh now and I think it was two two thousand and nineteen uh suggesting that the commission might want to uh consider consider doing that. And I got uh basically a thank you for the information and and that was the end of it. Um, but however, uh because of my involvement with the task force on climate change and because of what has happened over the last few years with employment and with industrial development in our community, I uh continue to pursue that. And the question was, well, how would we actually get a transit oriented district uh setup? So that led me to going off to talk to the State Department of Transportation, the rail section. And uh there, uh listed very carefully to the proposal. And I showed them the map of what we had done here in Groton. And uh they basically said, well, uh what you need to do to get this thing started would be to have a letter sent from the town um um to the state requesting uh they look at this thing. And so uh as some of you may recall, um I actually got the town council to write a letter to the governor and to the commissioner of transportation to uh consider transit oriented development uh in the town of Groton. And uh besides just doing it with the town of Groton, I got the city of Groton to do a letter, the city of New London to do a letter and a letter from the Borough of Stoneington to do the exact same thing. Interestingly enough, we got no response, any of the towns got any responses from the governor or from the mixture of transportation. Well, I I think um I felt like I would been uh led down a path that wasn't uh going to go anywhere. So um I then took the proposal to uh the Connecticut commuter rail council and uh made a presentation uh to them. And the upshot of that was that they uh wrote a letter to the governor and to the legislature of transportation. And they got a letter back saying, oh, this is very nice, but we don't have any funds, nor do we have an authority to do that. Well, then it turns out that I had an opportunity to um uh attend a meeting, a transportation meeting over in New London and sat between the new deputy commixture uh um and uh a person who I didn't know at the time, and that was Anthony Nolan, who was the state representative from from New from New London. And I made a presentation before that group. And uh at the end of the meeting, um uh uh Garrett Alito said, well, we would need some sort of authorization to do that. And at that point, uh Anthony leaned over to me and said, why don't you give me a piece of like uh write me up a bill and I'll submit it in the next legislation uh around the legislation. Well, um, so uh the short of it was that uh basically I ended up working with our own state rep um Christine Connolly, who asked me to write up a uh piece of legislation. I prepared a three and a half page, fairly detailed piece of legislation and asked her to submit it. She did, and that was like, that all happened last um uh uh basically uh fourteen months ago. And uh that bill was then submitted on uh from her to the General Assembly. And uh what that happens is that when you submit a bill and you're representative, it then goes to the Legislative um Committee. And they then write it up as a formal bill. And so, much to my surprise, my three and a half pages got uh reduced to exactly fourteen lines uh to develop a feasibility study to study the expansion of rail service in Eastern Connecticut. And so that gives you some background of where we started in this whole thing. So now I wanna move on and show you that in Connecticut, the rail service looks like this. This is what a a stylized uh view is. And as you can see, everything is in Connecticut aimed to going to New York City. Um, you've got all the uh lines all headed up. And whenever you talk to anybody about uh passenger rail in Connecticut, it is always, how do we get people to New York City faster? And then occasionally the Amtrak, which is shown in blue here, people talk about, well, we really wanna get people from New York uh to Providence and Boston, and those in between places are not our business. That's the state's business. So you see, Eastern Connecticut has basically a uh no local service. It stops at New London and Amtrak goes whistling through uh uh the town of Groton. And now if you look at, and this is a a bit of a map that we put together, put together. I wanna show you this because I think you'll see the relationship here. The white lines are the state, the major state highways. You say ninety five, three ninety five, ninety one. The red lines that you see here, the fine red lines, are where the rail lines exists. Now, the red lines basically have existed since about eighteen fifty. Now, that's plus or minus depending on which rail line it is, but you'll notice that the uh uh roadways, the major roadways and the rail lines uh have a lot of um uh uh similarity in terms of the path they take. Now, I've only showed you here the existing stations in red uh in the eastern end and the proposed stations that are uh part of the proposal that we'll we'll talk about in a moment. And I've showed you that this thing basically goes from New York uh to Boston. Well, focusing down here in our local region, when I blow up um uh our regional area, the red uh train tracks you can see there, and it's basically, it winds through um uh southeast Chicago and so this very wiggly line, which basically prevents the trains from going at really high speeds here. So we were talking about trains that can clearly go up to around sixty to uh eighty miles an hour, but not much beyond that. And um I I go to the next slide, which shows you um a a similar uh shot, but what I want you to see here is that as you go to Norwich, these two lines on the east, uh the west and east side of the river do not connect. They did originally, but they don't any longer. Um, and so there's a line that comes down the east side of the river. There's a line that comes uh east side of the river, the side and then on the on the west side. And they in fact connect up actively connect up with the Amtrak line that goes along the shoreline. The proposal that ended up being uh passed in legislature is one that would um uh uh would actually add proposed different uh new stations at um uh the city of Groton, the town of Groton, the U S Navy and Norwich. And then uh there was also one over here in Stoneington. And so you can sort of see what we've got here is a sort of a a potential for a local commuter system um um that is being uh being considered. And so what uh the legislation does is it will extend shoreline east to Rhode Island. It would establish a new uh Norwich branch line, the M B L going up the east side of the river. It would link the shoreline east with an with a Norwich branch line. And really importantly, it would link ground transportation with rail transportation. Now, um in this legislative process, it it's not always, it's something like making sausage. Uh, you start out with something and then people keep adding or subtracting things from it. And this has actually been the case with this particular uh piece of legislation. It started as being very simple and it got complicated as it went by. We started with one uh with only one person sponsoring, and that was Christine. By the time we uh Christine Connolly, and by the time we got finished with this, um there were uh twelve um uh state reps and two state senators that really supported the center uh this this proposal. Well, when I went to the um uh uh public hearing, we had a a big public hearing uh uh essentially by Zoom last spring and um some forty five people uh showed up to or participated via Zoom supporting this proposal. And I think only two people objected to it, and those two people actually didn't live anywhere as near here. They lived in New England, Connecticut. So we had a very positive response to the legislature. And then that got moved down uh through legis uh through the process and finally uh uh much to my surprise, got picked up by the Appropriations Committee. And the appropriation committee in the long run and in the in the final outcome basically authorized a two point three million dollar study to undertake uh this feasibility operational study. And so um I I wanna focus here on the three or four locations here in Groton and one in the New London. Um, uh, New London already has a station, as you all well know. And you'll see it connects up on the uh west side going up uh toward Norwich, but never gets into the downtown Norwich. Where if you go up on the east side, uh it goes up to the Navy base, through the Navy base in fact, and goes all the way up and there is um it it actually goes into downtown Norwich. And um if you look along this section, which I'm running the cursor along uh and starts right here and goes down around and then goes all the way around to here, that is the old essentially what's what's now referred to as the Providence and Worcester rail line, which is once um did support uh passenger rail, but in recent years, um the last thirty has basically been a short haul freight facility. But it is actively used. Essentially, this 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 rail is in uh in in rather good shape. And in fact, nightly trains come down from um up upper uh part of uh Eastern Connecticut and go down uh on the Amtrak lines at night, late at night, bringing gravel all the way to to Long Island. So um the section, the section that I'm particularly interested in 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 bringing to your attention is is the one that I'm playing the cursor around right now, which is called Groton Center. And so what this act did was it basically directed the legislature of transportation to explore expansion of passenger rail in Groton and importantly, link up ground transportation, ground transportation services to that rail. It was funded. And it is basically directed, the transportation commissioner to come up with this plan during twenty twenty-two. And in January twenty twenty-three, it is, it is, it is directed the Dartmouth Transportation to bring that report back to the Connecticut General Assembly. So it really does those four things. It looks at standing shoreline to Rhode Island, establishing a north-south session. Late in the game, it was put into this bill that it was to connect Norwich and New London. It wasn't clear what side of the rails, what side of the, the river they were going to do that on. And it really is not pretty particularly practical unless they're going to put a new bridge across the upper part of the Thames. And it directed in actual language to consider new stations in Groton and in the borough of Stonington. And then providing a link between those two. And so those are the four basic steps that they were looking at. Now, the situation today, as you well know, in Groton is thirty-eight thousand people. Daily commuters to Groton is about twenty-six thousand people. And that ninety percent, ninety percent of them travel in single occupancy vehicles. As you know, Electric Boat is hiring somewhere between five and twelve thousand new people over the next twelve years. And you saw in the paper today, it was announced that this year they were going to hire, I think it was three thousand fifty people to work at the shipyard in, in, in Groton, New London and in Rhode Island. And Electric Boat is clearly going to be building more new boats, somewhere between three, two and three a year for the next twelve years. And for each boat they build, they have to provide a crew of fifty, five hundred, two crews for each boat that is being built. And so some of Groton's needs, as you well know, is development, housing and transportation. So the vision here that is being thought about is expanding shoreline east to Rhode Island, establishes branch line, using existing track and stations to the extent that that's possible, which would be using conduct equipment, con, Amtrak rail and Worcester and Providence rail as well. And it would have new stations and would begin to connect the first and last mile of transportation. So what's in it? So what started all this? Well, it was the fact that Electric Boat, about the time that the zoning commission finished putting together its new regulations, it was announced that Electric Boat would be hiring a whole lot of people. They'd be building some brains, at least for the next twelve years. And that then precipitated a housing study that was done by the planning staff. It, it, it helps build businesses. There's been a long discussion about the need for a Groton town center. This provides that opportunity and it takes advantage of the opportunities, resources that are currently on hand. And so if we go back and look to what is of your business, the red zone here, mislabeled, I might add, is the, the MTC zone. And if I've drawn this circle around it, this is the half mile, the ten minute walk. If you put a station here with these three rails touch here, you see there's a huge area where transit oriented development would be, would be allowed. And so what you could envision is people coming in from Rhode Island could be coming down here, changing their station here, catch a train, get down to Electric Boat right here. Or if they happen to work at Pfizer, they could do the same thing and end up on the east side of the track, going to Pfizer's. Or if they happen to be working for the Navy, they could take the local up here and go on up to Navy base here. And if they worked in New London, they could go across the river and end up in New London. And I don't show the details over there for the purpose of this, of this presentation tonight. So you see, if we could get this feasibility study approved and a recommendation that they do it, we don't have to dig anything. We have to put in some stations, yes, but there's no new rails, no new roads. You basically have the facilities here in place. So what this does is rebuilds and expands existing rail infrastructure. It supports transit oriented development. It solves the first last mile problem of, of commuter trans- transportation. It solves money, the parking issues in the city of Groton. It reduces the need for more highway construction. It clearly increases worker safety and makes a better environment for them to operate. It supports Electric Boat, Pfizer, the Navy, other businesses. It potentially supports tourism because this system would obviously stop in Mystic. And we have the biggest area, one of the best tourist areas in the, in the state with Mystic Seaport there. Or the Mystic Seaport, the aquarium and then downtown. It would better connect Connecticut, Rhode Island and Massachusetts. It would, it reduces greenhouse gases, which is very important because in Connecticut, thirty-eight percent of our greenhouse gases, thirty-eight percent come from the transportation sector. The majority of that is from light trucks and small cars. And this train system provides an alternative to driving a truck or a car. It doesn't make you do that. It just provides a, an alternative. It would improve air quality for, for us. It makes the region a better place to live and work, I believe. And so the ask here is that you would support the expansion of this feasibility study that you would support the conduct effort. And my request to you is to consider now at this point, amending the MTC district to and create a transit oriented district. Essentially, basically a name change. Essentially, you have all the components that you will need. And the reason this is important is because if you look at state legislation and the state sources of funding, they will make a priority to TOD, TOD districts. And so there is something in the neighborhood of eleven million dollars available in that fund. And that could be available to Groton if we had the TOD. And so what this request is to also support and request funding to develop a master plan around the TOD district that's being proposed here. And part of, I know you have a TIF master plan, but that is for using money that is provided through private sector developers to, to do the master plan. I'm suggesting that it would be appropriate for the town of Groton to help develop that or develop a master plan so that it would jumpstart, potentially jump, help jumpstart the whole redevelopment of that downtown district and get this thing off now. Now, I'm, I'm concerned about this thing because essentially the, the clock's ticking. Electric Boats hiring people or trying to hire people. We know this takes a long time to do. We know we have a twelve year period to do this. And we have a concern for greenhouse gas emissions. Is if we don't get those under control, then we're going to have the problem of continued increased flooding, sea level rise and so forth in our, in our own community here. So I'm hopefully asking you all to consider or any entering a discussion with me about basically changing the MTC to a TOD, MTC district. And so with that, I'm happy to open this for further conversations with you all. I will stop sharing the slides. I have provided you with, I think a two and a half page summary of this. And had, have also made a presentation similar to this to the Groton Town Council with the understanding that I would make a simpler presentation to the planning and zoning commission, because I believe it's the planning and zoning commission's responsibility to make the sort, this sort of zone change or this district change that's being proposed here. And so with that, I'll stop. And opens up for conversations, Mr. Chairman.
All right. What I like to do is see if staff has any, anything to say, state on this request. Then I'll open up to the commissioners for, for questions. I do not want to have a debate with everybody tonight on, on pursuing this, this issue, but just to get the facts out. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I just, I just want to clarify, like, I understand what this feasibility study is. So, so the legislature has authorized a feasibility study of, of train stations in Groton and Stonington and Norwich. Has, has that study started?
Well, nice. I'm glad you asked that question. I've been on DOT's case since this was passed. And I actually had my first meeting with them tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. So the answer is it is actually not started. But I hope to hear tomorrow that it will start. And I'm a bit concerned because now they only have eleven months to produce this thing. And while eleven, while two point three million dollars is a lot of money, that's difficult to spend effectively in that kind of period, time period. So I'll know more about that very shortly.
And, and the result of this feasibility study is to recommend locations for train stations, recommend whether or not there should be train stations?
Well, I, I'm not totally sure of that. What I understand the situation to be is that they are going to look at the feasibility of whether this makes economic sense to have this expansion of the rail system here for, for us in Groton and Eastern Connecticut. And I'm making the argument that unlike the rest of the state, which all feeds to New York City, we have a situation here with a number of people who work at Electric Boat and Pfizer, that we in fact have an industrial center here, a, a, a heavy duty industrial center here, which is tied with New London and with Rhode Island. And it is high time we had a passenger commuter system that worked to the advantage of, this is a, a major industrial center, which is what we are.
And, and my understanding is you don't have any concerns about the language that we have regarding MTC or the uses that are allowed there or, or, or the mix of uses or how easy it is to develop in there. I mean, we allow a lot of things in that mixed use zone. You're more concerned about the name?
Say the last part again.
You're concerned about the name of the zone as opposed to the-
Yes. I'm concerned about, I think you've got most of what you need. And, and I am not a TOD land use expert by any stretch of the imagination. I have spent some time looking at various regulations. And there are a number of TOD zones throughout Connecticut. But I think you have basically what's needed there. But what you need to do is have it called what it really is, which is, the whole idea is to have people live there, have people be able to shop there and be able to take public transportation to work. And it would be able to do that because it would be able to take people to, 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 to Electric Boat, to Pfizer and to the subbase, which are the three major employers in our community. I mean, there is just nothing any bigger than that. And so it would begin to change the dynamics and it would begin to provide an alternative. So you don't have the single occupancy vehicle being used daily in our community. And I think it just makes good sense from a a land use planning point of view, but also from an environmental climate change point of view, which is the other area that I'm particularly interested in. I mean, the greenhouse gas emissions in Connecticut is thirty-eight percent from the transportation sector. Nationally, it's twenty-five percent. And so we're way above, way above what, what the national average is for, for greenhouse gases coming from automobiles and small trucks.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify what, what all you're asking the permission. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to open up to commissioners if they have any, any questions for the subject. Go in our reverse order. I'll start with you, Kevin.
Sure. Thanks. So did I miss something where you defined exactly what TOD means within the state of Connecticut?
I didn't, I didn't, there is a legal definition in statute. I did not cite that. It's basically, it's basically, and if, if you will, I'll paraphrase it. Basically, it is where you have mixed use development set up within a ten minute walk, which is a half mile to a public transportation system.
Yeah. Okay. And the feasibility study. So is that defined with that feasibility study is whereby, are you asking that we change this to a TOD MTC prior to the feasibility study?
Yes, because if, if, if they see that you've made the effort to change the land use so that you're thinking of it as being a TOD session, I think that gives the whole credibility of, 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 of what we're trying to do here, what you're trying to do with the mixed use. But it also then goes to the issue of meeting the governor's climate change initiatives as well. So it, it, it has a multifaceted, I think, effect. Now, very clearly, Deb and I've had this conversation. It's a chicken and egg problem. And I would say that's correct, except what I hope we're doing here is we're, we're basically incubating the egg here to get ready for this. And I think it's going to be very important.
Yeah. In the feasibility study, this is my last question, Mr. Chair. The feasibility study, are you expecting, for instance, there are, say there's twelve thousand workers at EB and three thousand at the Navy and three thousand at Pfizer. Are you expecting that feasibility study to be land use based in planning and zoning? Or are there going to be numbers that say, hey, listen, whatever we want to do, I mean, shoreline east to me was, you know, poorly thought, poorly thought out plan because it couldn't scale and we didn't have the bodies. And so is the feasibility study going to basically say, for two point three million, we're going to spend, you know, twenty million dollars, and I'm just putting the numbers, I'm not trying to be negative, to serve a hundred and twenty people? Is that the type of thing that we'd expect? I mean, where's the success there? I don't see the success.
Very good question. When you look at across the, all the branch lines in Connecticut, the numbers are really a bit squirrely, frankly. And, and, and there, a lot of them are historic. And so and some of them are new and they're increasing. When they originally did the shoreline east, as far as I can tell, there was a pretty light bit of planning that went into that. It was more like, we're going to have to do construction in ninety-five. Therefore, we need to be able to get people from point A to point B, that is, the Haven to, to, to Groton or to, to, to New London. Let's extend the shoreline east. And that was about the level of it. Now, the shoreline east, it turns out, was actually been much more successful than I think they ever had thought. You know, you build it and they come. Same thing that happens with the highway, except the highway gets plugged up pretty quick. I mean, there's been some recent news articles in the state about that whole problem of, are you going to use what you have and, or are you going to build more highways? And it's pretty clear, at least on a national basis, every time you build a more highway, build a new highway, it gets filled up. I mean, that certainly has been the case with the Merritt Parkway. It certainly has been the case with I ninety-five. I mean, I ninety-five is already plugged up to where it was before the pandemic. And that is pretty scary because a lot of people are not going to New York right now. And so it's going to be a calculation that they're going to have, that they will try to make, and I think in a systematic sort of way where they look at, okay, how many people are coming in? How are they coming? Where are they coming from? Are there possibilities of getting these people to, to ride the train to either Electric Boat or Pfizer or the Navy or where else? Where else, wherever else in town? How long will it take to get people excited about that and get them involved with it? What are the subsidies that are involved? What are the the overall operating costs that are associated with this thing? And then they will have, I'm sure, some sort of mechanism for figuring out what that looks like. Now, as best I can tell, I have been able to figure out exactly at this point, and of course, I'm not a transportation planner either. I'm not sure how they do that, but they tell me that they'll be able to figure out. I mean, part of what's going on. As I look at both the the road system or the highway system and the rail system. People always say, well, it costs you so much per person to go from point A to point B on a train and they and they want to charge you for that. But you you don't have that same sort of sub, you don't have that same sort of complaint about cars. Basically, you got on the road and it's free. Now, it's not really free because there is a tax associated, a gas tax associated with it. Which doesn't even begin to.
Thank you.
So it's a it's a complicated sort of conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chair.
So do you have any? Questions?
Sorry, just a couple of comments. I was looking, of course, at the POCD and it certainly does say to enhance transportation options. And to me, I think, especially while I came from Stanford, where I was used to having a fine train station with parking, mind you. That went to a lot of nice places, but. I do think that POCD kind of missed the fact that we do have so much rail in place. And I think things have changed, of course, since the POCD was written, that the economy has really taken off, the opportunities there. There's so many things coming together. And if. I don't understand exactly why putting three letters into our zone would help things, but if it does, if there's a chance of that. It seems like it's a no brainer to me, but this is just, it's so important to get people out of their cars and into a better way. Be much healthier too. So, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Barbara.
Yes, I agree with Sue. I think. I don't think there's a downside to this, and we we know that paying for it. Would certainly be a downside in one sense, and you have to weigh. The greater good, I guess, into that. But I I would be in favor of this. I think it's a it's a a way we need to go. Thank you.
I ask my question to is probably the staff is, is is there a downside? I can't think of any to throwing these initials in front of our. What is, but kind of a basic thing is that we're says transit oriented. I took a look. I don't remember actually having a physical bus stop anyplace except for in the shopping center back there, which makes it our transit hub to begin with. Only place where both buses seem to come. We 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 got it. That was it. But so is but is there any possible downside to acknowledging this is where we want transit to come?
So just a couple of things. So this would involve both a map amendment and a text amendment. So every single place in the regulations where it says MTC, it would have to be changed to MTC slash TOD. Which is, okay, it's on the staff side, but that's the tedious tedious chore. But and then and then there's. You know, what happens if there is no T here? You know, the transportation, the recommendation is to put it somewhere else. Then there's there's a shift that needs to be done. And yet again, another, you know, text amendment, map amendment. Those are the only downsides that I can see. Diane, do you see anything else?
Well, the state was talking about this a couple, was it a year or two years ago? About trying to define a transit center. And they were going to try to control zoning. In that center. And that's where, I don't know if that's where this came from.
Sort of open opened up the zoning to put whatever you want.
I didn't want to get in, I didn't want to get into that type of discussion tonight. But just to identify potential problems or the need for more information.
I think one of the only, the other issue is, is are you are you considering, would you consider it just for all the property that's. Right now zoned MTC, or would you start going out of that area? If you start going out of that area and going up to the 10 minute walk or the half mile. Then you get to into issues with consistency with the POCD and things like that. Right now, bringing it on the MTC, you know, just adding, you know, TOD as part of the MTC might not. An issue, but going outside of that area at this point, a little more analysis.
I think that's true. It's sort of low hanging fruit is just keep what we've got, because you can always change that down the road. Based on the success or non-success of it. One thing is that the the T in this is transportation, not trains.
That's correct. It's.
So make sure the study seems to be really focused on trains and the area. Hasn't really fleshed out. The connection of buses and.
Actually, actually how it's called transit, which.
I understand. It's a tris on for all for the transit. I think it should be transit. I think we can do.
That's what it is.
But when I hear the study, I want to make sure that it doesn't rise or fall depending on how far the trains can go. In fact, any element within it. I want to make sure that if in fact it doesn't pay off to do a a train up to subbase, well, that's fine. We, if you have a Groton's. Train station, then timing a shuttle bus to get you from the train station up there works just great. It's less than a five minute drive from where we're thinking a train station might kind of go to Pfizer, to EB or to Pfizer. That's how low hanging fruit for for a jitney or two to just kind of make that connection. Rather than having an entire million dollar train make that big thing. It still takes a driver, so I don't know what does. So the feasibility should evaluate all those things and not just focus on this totality, this whole train system. In which case, I'm all for that. I just want to make sure that the focus isn't too tightly focused and that's broadly based.
Well, if I may, Hal, what's interesting about what happened, and it really was. One of the, one of the representatives basically put in a ticket to ground transportation. And that basically includes the bus systems and shuttle systems as well. And so it was an interesting addition. To the study, that also makes it more complicated, but it goes to your very point. It may turn out that you have something that works that goes to Electric Boat and Pfizer, but doesn't go to the subbase. Because it may be more cost effective to do it by an express bus system, for example. And so I think that's clearly on the table at the state level.
Okay, that's good. That's all I've got. I see no problem. Adding that into, despite how much work it it gives you to do on Friday, but it's, it does make sense to give some focus. Right now, we're kind of haphazard about any kind of transit orientation down there, and we shouldn't be. That is our our focus point in town.
Michael.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I. Have a few questions and some comments and is that circle that is drawn, does that also go into the city of Groton? And do we need, do they need to do this same kind of a thing?
I'm going to make the presentation to the city of Groton. I'm also going to make the presentation to the city of New London and to the town of Stonington. And so there'll be similar presentations to all of them. New London, it looks like it already has the TOD district there. The city. I'm not sure where they are at. They've been talking about some some changes at the five corners and. And so they'll have to make a decision of what they want to do there. I know. The mayor has expressed some interest in this, and Stonington has got the same situation, so. I will make the make the pitch and see what happens.
Yeah, no, it just seems like the kind of thing that if, for whatever reason, if somebody doesn't want to do this. We're sort of like, you know, I don't know why. I I'm I'm all for this. This commission has. Has had this conversation in the past. I think some of the issues that I would bring up that. Just just general thoughts that I'm having is, I know that Hal has mentioned the past security at the base. I don't think that the anticipation of this thing going through the bases. Is.
Well, it it certainly wasn't my original thought. It was just up at the base.
Yeah.
And now people have immediately decided that this should go to Norwich. And the security issue is a whole other matter that.
Yeah. The only other thing that I would, the comment that I would make is, I I think that these things seem to be. Much more popular than you might first think. But my, the, I I I walk the rail line in Quaker Hill. Right across from the base quite a bit. We're out there probably once a month and we'll walk that rail line and that rail line is. Not, I don't know rail lines that well, but it's not. Like really good. It's, you know, got wood ties and some of them are being replaced occasionally. And those trains that run there are diesel. So I guess, you know, I don't know if there would be anticipation. We're not talking at this point, you know, that, but like, we're we're working on this commission hoping to promote electric. Cars. And then I would hate to think that we're like trying to promote electric cars and then substitute. Our transportation with diesel trains. That aren't, hope, you know, hopefully they're very, very successful because we're then going in maybe the wrong direction. I don't know, but. Or, you know, how that all works.
Well, obviously, the shoreline east is on the. Main Amtrak and that is all electric. So and so that's not a problem. The big problem is the Providence and Worcester. Track is not electrified. But I noticed that there has been over the last several years, a fair amount of work that's being done. With Metro North and with the Long Island Railroad, where they're now using battery powered. And 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 I mean, they've actually got underway right now. I mean, as we sit here, test runs going out on Long Island. Because they don't want to spend the money putting up the catenary, and they'd like to see whether they can really make that system work on that. And so. Part of my push, which I suspect may not get a terrific. Support will be to have DOT to look at that part of it because. It just seems to me that the Europeans have been doing it for some time, and there's no reason why we can't do it in this country. And these aren't long hauls, these are short hauls, and it's almost ideal for having this thing battery powered.
Well, maybe by the time all these things come together, that'll be the new thing. Yeah, anyway, I would I would be in favor of this.
I I would also say that even if you did run diesels, the new clean diesels, it reduces the greenhouse gases. By about 30 or 30%. So it's significantly better than running automobiles and trucks, light trucks. But if you get it all electric, then then the numbers go way up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I I'm happy to come back and have a conversation with you further on this. But it will be at your, your your decision to to do that.
Yeah, I I think if we're gonna. Look at it, we've got to talk among ourselves to. Decide whether it's meaningful to change. The designation of the district before the study is complete. It doesn't take too long to to make a change, if that makes any sense to do that. But I. I'm a little concerned if the study gets too complex. Are we better off just saying we've got an infrastructure there? All we really need is Amtrak's green light, which is, I understand, been very difficult to obtain. And the cars. And several years ago, when I attended a meeting to address. Bridge railroad bridges that affect boating, especially at Shaw's Cove. Owners there were very upset at the fact the bridge doesn't open up very much, affects their business. But at that time, they said that they would thought that they had enough. Know the new electric cars that they're running between New Haven and. And New York on the line, that they would be using those on the existing shoreline east to New London. Because there, it's a lot more effective to have electric vehicles like that because they can accelerate much quicker. And more versatile than a diesel that chugs along at a very slow speed. And really, to have commuter rail, you need high speed. Not. Not high end speed, but the ability just to get up to the operating speed fairly quickly. So you can start and stop the vehicles. But I would think that we, you'd be better off keeping the. The expansion to shoreline east, if that gets the green light, then you can look at expanding it beyond there. Because there's no infrastructure that needs to be upgraded or maintained. Except for the vehicles.
Oh, you you should know, Mr. Chairman, that the. Connecticut DOT is already running shoreline east.
They run it with those diesel engine things that chug along and make a lot of noise and smoke. And don't go very fast.
No, my point is that they have actually just started testing the all electric vehicles.
Has they?
Yes, they just started that. And apparently, the the first round has been that they've been successful.
Well, they're gonna work. I mean, they know they work.
Well, no, they know they work, but the problem is that there's all these issues of. Load losses and so forth, and the 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 electrical technology of it, I don't understand. But they actually have to run them as test vehicles first, and they're doing that right now.
Yeah, but they have to have the vehicles.
Yes.
But they should be able to. But they needed the permission from Amtrak to run them on their lines because the state owns the lines between New York and New Haven. Those are Connecticut state rail lines, which Amtrak uses. Also, but the real problem is getting Amtrak to agree to either run the train. Or let the Connecticut employees run the train. You've got to overcome that first.
Let me put it this way, everything I know or whatever I've learned so far about the management of train systems in Connecticut. It's really complicated. Amtrak has one view, DOT has another view, and then you've got Metro North, and it goes on and on like this. And I mean, they do cooperate, but it's not easy in getting those those negotiations. And you're going to have to add to this whole mix is Rhode Island. So it's 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 it's. Best left to those guys to figure this out.
I don't think it's, well, Rhode Island, if you're just going to Westerly, it'd be just Amtrak. I don't think they would care. But you're also going to have a fight on your hands with mariner operators that are impacted by bridge openings.
That's true.
So you've got to be prepared for that. And you should should probably present this to the COG also. They should have it in their transportation plan. I suggested that to the planning rep at last night's meeting.
Okay, so let me just say that the expansion of shoreline east to Rhode Island is in the COGS plan.
Oh, it is.
And yes, that part is. The north south is not yet. And will have to be introduced at some point in time.
So I'd like to. Hold off any further discussion on this to give people some thought and what to do. And I think we'll need some input from you, Deb, as to what the practicality of. Revising the zoning regulations for this subject. To me, it shouldn't be done until we have the state approval of the expansion.
Okay, and I'd like with all of you about, we were. Over the last couple of months, we've talked about a number of regulation amendments. So I think I'd like to have a discussion with you all as to what's the. over the last couple of months, we've talked about a number of regulation amendments. So I think I'd like to have a discussion with you all as to what's the priority here. Yeah.
Well, no, but I, I'm concerned with what the state, state sometimes thinks that there's a transportation center means. And it is to whether it's, gets us into trouble or not. You know, to change it. If you does, if the council designated it that, to me, that is all you'd need.
Um.
No, if they just said our transportations, if it's just for money, you know, funding or.
I, I mean, that's one, one method of doing it, but if you want the zoning to reflect transit oriented design, you need to change.
Yeah, then we'd have to be careful with it. But we have the airport sort of a transportation center too. Hmm. You know, to say it's just one point may not be realistic, but that's something we'd have to discuss in detail. Does anyone have any other questions for Zell? If not, I'd like to move on. And we can add this to maybe some other meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Not too busy.
Hmm. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you, and I'm, I'm happy to come back as you, you might request.
All right. Okay, so. Like to move on and to, uh, new applications. That we have.
It's just one new application.
One, any other?
Nope, that's all.
Is that just a minor type thing or?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a phasing and then some rearranging of a plan you recently approved.
Yeah, okay. Referrals, we have none. Commission reports, uh, reported chair. We had a, a cog meeting that wasn't a meeting last night. Only about four or five people, and they did it all by Zoom. I, I, they had some discussion at the end of the meeting about lack of attendance, but I think what ha- happens and what was suggested last night was that they, they announced a meeting a week or a week and a half in advance and nothing, no communications. And a lot of these organizations that do that always re-notify you that day of the meeting. That the, don't forget the meeting tonight, and it may be, maybe that. But that, at last night's meeting, they just had some discussion over short-term rental. This, uh, presentation that Justin had revised his white paper. We had, there were a couple of points that, one of the things they like to do is go around the, to the attendees to see what's happening in their, everybody's, uh, community. But the city of Groton was talking about their floating zone that they had in the five corners area. And I think they were, sounded like they were getting into trouble because they were trying to say an application wasn't coherent with the adjacent neighborhood, which is not allowed, that you've got to have specific, uh, criteria. And they had a master plan, I guess, that they were using it to shoot down an application based on, on just, uh, was it in, in tune with a adjacent community and not on specifics. And I, I'm surprised that in the historic district of New London, that they had a problem with some of the members on their planning and zoning getting approval for an item. The historic district there sounded like it was more, more of an advisory committee, commission. And if they didn't like something, you, you could just, the planning and zoning could continue on, or they're the ones that made the actual, actual decision just based on their, their input. Uh, let's see. And we talked about bike storage at the last meeting. Were you able to get anything from the cog or devil?
Not, not yet, not yet. Bruce is going to be working on that.
Hmm. If it's even possible to get anything. Hmm. It may not be. And, uh, I'm going to be, uh, out in Colorado next, for our next meeting, and I don't know if I'll be able to attend the meeting at this time or not. So are you going to be available, Hal, if I'm not?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Yeah. So I may be able to attend, but I'm not sure. But the trip is sort of not too well organized at this point, so.
Sorry, being out of state or you're out of the country is not an excuse anymore.
I know I can attend, but sometimes they have things in the evening that are part of the trip.
Take a break, bring your drink with you.
I could, that's what I was thinking. I could, that's what I did last, no, I, last time, that's what I did. I went, just stayed in my room and ran the meeting. Okay, I didn't have anything else. Does anybody on the commission have anything to report on or any issues to raise?
I just have my usual, uh, concerns about light. We, I don't think we've seen light report recently, and I'd appreciate it if we could have one. I haven't noticed any changes in the, uh, properties that have brought attention of staff. I, even every time I drive past, thought I want to go and rip down the garish sign.
A little bit of a question. I don't know if it's, is it a priority at all? Uh, given short staffing, that's that, uh, I just was driving by the sandbox on Gold Star, which apparently is doing pretty well. It looks like it anyway. I wish them the best. Their, um, parking lot lights look like they originally were full cut off, and then they tilted them up at forty-five degrees and now they're not. So I, I imagine maybe they're, they were thinking, oh, we want to light up the building. Well, good for them, but now it's, it kind of glares bright back out with the street, actually, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll bet if I drove around, I could find others, but that was one that was really obvious to me, so.
It's the little things, Hal.
Yeah. Well, Deb, does anybody look at, at shrubbery that goes into the sidewalk area? No, I'm serious. I mean, it's safety hazard, because when I walk downtown Mystic, down the London Road on the north side, there's a hedge right by the, the witch house that actually blocks, why are you laughing? It blocks the, the sidewalk. You can just barely get one person by without being in the road.
Right. Um, you know, it, it depends on who owns the road. Um, it's, it's not something that comes, right, it's not something, well, the right of way. It's not something that comes to our department. I mean, if it's town road, it goes to the public works department to be addressed.
Yeah.
So in that case, it would go to the state.
You think that's a state? Yeah. They have to do it. It's not considered a blight issue because it's somebody's private property that the hedge is on.
I, I'll ask Tom, um, but I suspect he's going to say the state, but I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of, I wanted to thank you for the letter that you wrote with the short-term rentals. But it was very good.
Yeah.
Uh, to the town council. I wanted to just, uh, follow up on that a little bit and to see if you thought, or if the commission thought that we should have also sent that to Noank and the city. Given that if the town were to write an ordinance, uh, potentially it could include them and they might benefit from that. Or, or at least to participate in the conversation.
Hmm.
Just wondering.
Trying to get the council to sit down with us.
Well, I think that if we get, you know, maybe if we get more bodies interested in it, I mean, obviously Noank has an interest in this. And I think that the decision that they made was, uh, a difficult one. And, uh, they may have benefited or made a different decision. Who knows if they had the backing of the town council or they could, you know, as, as we hope to do is, I think Kevin said, you know, hand in glove, the regulation and the ordinance. So I don't know if that's something that we could do, or if, if, uh, what other people think, if, if we could include them, and then, you know, I would like to get the conversation going sooner rather than later. Just because I've been thinking about a lot and I've got a lot of ideas and I just,
Hmm.
Uh, uh, I would like to start tackling that issue. I also know that staff is, uh, pressed at this point without Diane.
We got, yeah, yeah, we got to sit down with the council first or get.
Maybe we can do it while we got Diane back.
What is she doing back? Is this a boomerang or something?
I know, right? You've got like three days. That's it.
Okay. But Mr. Chair, you're basically saying, and Michael, we need the council to move forward on this a little bit.
Right.
We've sent the letter. It's just not like a, just a, a chase letter. It basically says we'd like to, to, to move forward with, um, an approach. That's all we asked, right?
No, I, I think, and I also think that, like, time is, is critical here because not to be, but like, every day that we don't do something, then there's another grandfather being born, you know? It's just.
It all depends how we resolve or what we think about we should do. We haven't had that basic conversation yet.
No, so that's why I don't think that we should have it tonight.
We should.
But I would like to put it on the agenda. I mean, just because it wasn't on the agenda and then put it on the agenda so that we can have a conversation, so that when we do, hopefully sit with the town council or whoever does, that we have some real, uh, well-thought-out plans.
Right, and consensus.
Yeah. That's critical. You don't want me up there.
First of all, we got to get the council to agree to talk with us, I think. Once we do that, once they say yes, then we can start planning on how we want to.
Good.
The, the, does, uh, is sending it to the Noank in the city at this point premature, you think?
I, I think yes. I think right now, until we get an agreement to sit down with them.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
And then we may want to do that.
Yeah, I think the more people I think that we can include in this, the more powerful.
I actually want to do that, but.
Would we consider, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, sending a letter to the town council that, um, and put a date out there in, in our, one of our March meetings, we would like to begin to discuss this. Therefore, we need a reply from you prior to our March twenty-seventh meeting or whatever else it is.
They have to have a direct phone call with them.
Okay.
I, I'll have to give them a little bit of time to get their feet on the ground.
Push a little, that's all.
No, I know, but they don't, it's really pretty early.
You're right.
I'm, I'm from the private sector. I, we get, you know, you're just like, I'm with Kevin.
I'm sending them FedExes already.
All right, not an ongoing thing.
That's all. Thank you.
Have anything else? And then we have attached the application, uh, update or the schedule. Which is good to keep our eye on it to see might expire if anybody thinks we're going to have concerns and have to look at something in advance of the actual presentation. So we don't, so we won't run out of time. And having approval have to be that night or the next day from, that we actually formally get to vote. Have it presented and voted on. It looks like right now we don't have anything that would fall and be a problem. Or one that we think we might have questions on. Does anyone have anything else? Not, uh, you know, make a motion for adjournment?
So move second.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Right, good night.
Yep, so we can chug along to the next meeting.